Let's call it a order, the Planning Commission meeting for April 19, 2018. Pledge of Allegiance, Chair Hedy is not here, I will go ahead. Actually, Joe?
Sure. He missed a few of them.
Yeah.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's do roll call.
Commissioner Hamel?
Here.
Commissioner Padilla?
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia?
Here.
Vice Chair Hedy is absent. Chair Dunston?
Here. Okay. Any reordering of the agenda? Looks like no. Any presentations? Looks no. Approval of the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting, March 15, 2018? Can I get a...
I motion to approve.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Upstayed. Okay. Public comments? Swing and a miss.
Nancy Emerson for item two.
Item two? Okay. So we'll hold that until item two comes up. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, none. And moving to other business, which is the preliminary review of 653 Avenue of the Flags, Arco Gas Station, 18-FDP-01, and 18-CUP-01. Irma?
Thank you, Chair Dunston, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to present tonight the application for the Arco AMPM service station. It's actually not only a service station, but it's a commercial project as well. And it is located at 653 Avenue of Flags, in the Avenue of Flags specific plan area, which we will see in a moment here. This is the vicinity map. You can see the project location at the top. It's right at the very top end of the corner, right opposite where the 101 southbound freeway exit comes off. Prominent view of all the traffic that's coming off the freeway there. The site is a little over a half an acre, 0.6 acres. Currently, the site is being used for a U-Haul truck and trailer rental business. There's a 101 auto repair shop there, and also some miscellaneous vehicle storage businesses that use the space. The use is adjacent to the site on the east... There we go. Okay. So on the south is commercial. There's another gas station down here, and then auto repair shop. To the media east is the median number one of the specific plan, but over here is the motel. This is the freeway off-ramp, and public storage. And along here, which is Central Avenue, so this would be the west side, is residential use. The project is a final development plan and a conditional use permit, which are being processed concurrently, for a commercial project, which consists of a new Arco gasoline gas station with a canopy... Oh, no, 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 no. What do we do with this? Okay. Let's go back here. Okay. A new Arco gas station with a canopy that covers 3,180 square feet of area. Underneath that canopy are six fuel dispensers with two pumps each, for a total of 12 gas pumps. And there's a related AMPM convenience store, which is actually housed in the commercial building, but it's attached to the gas station as kind of a supportive use. So in the two-story commercial building, there is, on first floor, as I mentioned, the convenience store and a quick-serve restaurant. And there's also a second story with office space. The project also includes demolition of the existing pavement and structures. So it was a former gas station, and there's a former canopy, and some of the structures are remaining from that former use on the site. Parking required for this particular mix of uses is 23 spaces, and 23 are provided. And it's being provided as a combination of striped spaces and some under-canopy spaces because vehicles coming to fuel up at the gasoline pumps will also run in and use the convenience store during that time, so we're counting some of that. What is needed, however, that is not shown on the plans, is one loading space, which is required for commercial use by city code. Access is being provided at two primary points along the Avenue of Flags. And they are also proposing one driveway access along Central, which I will address a little later in the presentation, which is something that the city is not really allowing at that location. The project is also providing onsite stormwater retention. So as I mentioned before, this project is in the Avenue of Flags specific plan. And just briefly, I'm going to go through some of the requirements that it's complying with. It's located in the Gateway North District, basically the median one district, which has been identified as a travelers-oriented district in the specific plan, and encourages visitors serving in vehicle support uses, which this clearly is what's being proposed. So it's a use that's appropriate. And it's on opportunity site number one. And in addition to the uses that are being proposed by this project, the location of the site really does have an opportunity to provide a welcome gateway entrance to the city of Buellton and to our downtown, being that it's so prominently located at the off-ramp of Highway 101. The project generally conforms to the specific plan development code. And later, throughout the presentation, I'll make comments on the areas that they need to strengthen their project a little bit. The proposed commercial building generally complies with the Art Deco style that has been approved for the avenue. The comment here is that all the structures need to comply with the Art Deco style, and that includes the gas canopy, lighting, and signage. The structures identified in the specific plan that are allowed for this particular site are mercantile and specialty, which the commercial building is a mercantile building, and the specialty is the gas station proposed structure. The building height maximum that's allowed is 35 feet, and their proposed project is 25 feet, 6 inches, so well within that requirement. The specific plan encourages zero lot lines and a maximum 25-foot setbacks. But variation may be considered to this guideline in order to accommodate a unique set of circumstances, in which case this is the site, which is, this is a regularly shaped site. It's a proposed specialty use, which is the gas station. And it also has that gateway entrance component, which would allow for some leeway in how to position the uses on this site. And additional detail on the design, building massing, is found in the design review report, which is being, has been included as part of the staff report and is also being provided to the applicant. So this is the site plan. Just really quickly, this is Central Avenue here. There are two existing driveways that they are proposing to close, and proposing a new driveway access at this point. They are showing a trash enclosure right here at the corner of the site. There's parking here. The gas canopies are located here. They're showing one egress point, egress, egress, egress point here, along the Avenue of Flags, and coming back around here. Additional parking is here, and the proposed two-story building is located at the south end of the site. Some general comments on the site plan is that the project needs to present a welcoming northern gateway entrance to the Avenue of Flags. And one of the most prominent things that pops out is the trash enclosure, which is located at this very visible site, and we're asking that that be relocated to a less prominent There have been comments made during our review about the adequacy of site maneuvering onsite for gasoline trucks and even trash trucks that might need to access. And as a result, we are asking that a truck turning movement analysis be provided to assure that there's adequate space. As I mentioned before, no vehicular access will be allowed along Central Avenue, and this is due to the limited site distance at the location. I'll just go back real quickly and show you where it is. And also the traffic circulation impacts on the residential street. So right here is where they're proposing a new driveway cut, and the street curves at this location, so there's very limited site access. And this is a residential use here. So the traffic impacts of gasoline tankers at that location would not be ideal. Additional comments on the site plan, they need to show the access and circulation of vehicles and pedestrians, including path of travel. We could not see how the second floor was really accessed from the periphery or internally. So, and this is a comment that the building department also made about needing to show path of travel and circulation, so that will need to be addressed. And we will need three-dimensional site plans, and especially showing the street frontage dimensions, so that the signage allowance can be determined. Right now, there are no dimensions shown, especially along the frontages, so there's only an approximation made of the sign, so we really didn't, couldn't really calculate what their signage would be. So these are the elevations that were submitted. Then, again, I really appreciate the applicant went back and did a redesign on the commercial building when they found out that Art Deco was approved for the avenue, so we do appreciate that effort. And, you know, it's generally, you know, a good stab at the Art Deco. Our architect, city architect, went through and provided some more detailed comments on some of the nuances that we would like to see further to reflect the Art Deco. So those are all detailed in the report. But just some variations in the massing here and there. And then some of the materials, some of the comments that he made on the comments on the color and materials board is that wood and steel are not common materials in Art Deco, so, you know, those type of things need to be looked at. So just with this in mind, while the commercial building was designed, redesigned for Art Deco, the other structures on the site were not, and they all will need to comply with the Art Deco requirement. The floor plans were submitted for the first floor of the commercial building. This is the convenience store right here, so the entrance is here from the gas station area. And then right here is a quick-serve restaurant, with access also at the front here.
I think the access is the other side of the building?
Oh. You know, you're right. Thank you, Mark.
Those are the doors there.
But no floor plans were provided for the second floor, so it was difficult to see how the second floor related to the downstairs and how it was really being accessed. We did notice that some stairs on the outside of the building, these were not shown in the elevations. But, so additional detail is needed for second-floor plans. This is the elevation that was provided for the gas station area. Again, as I mentioned before, the gas canopy, the lighting and the signage all need to comply with the Art Deco design style. And the lighting for the canopy, the gas canopy, does need to be dark-skies friendly. So, let's see, building and design comments. I'll just reiterate that the Art Deco style is required for all the buildings and the structures. Need a second floor plan, showing, and the elevations need to show stairways on the exterior. And one of the comments that the design review had is that there was no door or access shown to the second-floor offices, and only minimal windows. The building department has provided comments, and those will be given to the applicant, that could potentially impact the building design, and that's why I'm mentioning this in particular here. They commented on the need for an elevator and a second exit for the second floor. There's some inconsistency internally between plan sets, plan sheets, and the elevations and the materials, so that all needs to be, make sure that the next submittal is consistent. And additional detail on the building and design aspect is in the design review report that was done by the city architect. So this is what was submitted for the sign program. And it appears that some of this was done when the style was still in the agrarian form, which was the prior iteration of the project that came in during the concept review, so this will need to be updated to reflect the Art Deco style. And the signage itself will need to reflect Art Deco. And this site plan also appears to be from a prior iteration of the project, so that all needs to get updated. So some comments, additional comments on the signage and lighting. So we will require a master sign program per the city code, and it's pretty well detailed in our code what's required to go into the sign program. But basically, greater detail is going to be, needed to be shown for the location, dimensions, colors, materials, lettering style, and lighting, all, you know, complying with Art Deco. It appears that a pole sign 30 feet high is being proposed, and that is something that would not be allowed at this location, and certainly not of the magnitude proposed. But we would encourage the applicant to consider incorporating some of the signage into a gateway signage component, which, you know, we could work with them in terms of having a little bit, you know, less of a large sign that appears just like a pole sign, but a more of a gateway welcoming signage that's a little bit lower at their location. So similarly, for the lighting, the lighting plan will require greater detail to provide specs for all fixtures at all locations, exterior locations, types and specifications, and these all need to be Art Deco as well. Just, again, just repeating, all buildings, they must be fully shielded, night sky friendly. And we will require a photometric lighting analysis to make sure that there's no lighting spillover to the adjacent properties. This is the landscape plan that was provided. And in general, the amount of landscaping that they're providing, which is about 18% of the project site, is, you know, seems to be adequate, but again, greater detail and clarification is needed on the plan. They need to show all the existing trees and identify if they are to be retained or removed. They need to show the location of the proposed shrub and vine plantings. There's a great palette of plantings shown, but no locations of where they went. Only rock mulch was shown. And particularly at the conceptual review, the Planning Commission stressed the importance of landscaping, and so we would like to see enhanced treatment of landscaping at the corner of Avenue of Flags and Central, which is the gateway entrance to the city, and at other strategic locations as appropriate. In addition, our code requires that all portions of setback areas, fronting on streets, be landscaped, so there will be a need for a three-foot landscape strip along the Central Avenue setback area, as well as screening for the trash enclosure. A grading and drainage plan was submitted with the, along with the utilities plan and other engineering plans. And the only main comment on this is that the grading plan does need to be consistent with their stormwater control plan, which it did not match. And, again, reiterated comment that the proposed driveway access along Central will not be allowed. And pointing out at this point that the project is subject to Tier IV requirements, and that the stormwater control plan only refers to Tier III requirements. So as part of the revision to the project plans, they need to take that into consideration. There's some additional comments, and general comments, so the applicant will need to address all the comments in the staff report, the design review report, as well as the Planning Commission discussion, and any presentations made tonight. These all will be incorporated into an incomplete letter to be provided to the applicant. And one important thing I would like to just point out here, the correct spelling is Avenue of Flags, not Avenue of the Flags, so we would like to see that corrected on all of the plans and materials. We'd like to see you provide hours of operation for all the uses and the estimated number of employees per shift, so that we can confirm the parking calculations and assumptions that we made when determining the parking adequacy. And I know the next comment, considering providing e-vehicle charging stations, this was a comment that the Planning Commission had also made at the conceptual review. Submit trash and recycle area plans to Marburg for review, and incorporate any design requirements into the revised plans. And then the Santa Barbara County Fire Department only started their review this week of the plans that were circulated, because the fees were only received by them this week. So any comments that are received from the fire department will need to be incorporated into the site and architectural plans. And as I mentioned before, truck turning and movement analysis shall be provided, and this may result in some reconvicoration of the site layout. So this project is exempt from environmental review. It meets the criteria for an infill development project, Class 32. Just real quickly, the site is less than five acres, surrounded by urban uses. It's generally consistent with the applicable plans and zoning, and it would not result in significant traffic noise, air quality, or water quality impacts, as was determined as part of the Avenue of Flags specific plan mitigated negative declaration. So the recommendation from staff to the Planning Commission is that the Planning Commission provide direction to the applicant and staff on the proposed project plans.
And I just may add one thing that you didn't touch on regarding the pole sign, that the Planning Commission at your conceptual meeting did say you did not want pole signs.
Correct. Is it okay if we ask questions to staff at this point? Perfect. And I'll just go ahead and get started, guys, if that's okay with you. Just on the signage, you mentioned a gateway sign. Just clarify what that specifically would be.
You know, it's, we don't have a specific design at this point in mind. We'd like to work with the applicant, but it's really a prominent location, and it's one of the first things that a vehicle, you know, sees when they're exiting Avenue of the freeway, so we'd like to see what we can do to work with them to incorporate some of that into their signage and...
Something to the effect of "Welcome to Buellton," or something like that, and with a nice Art Deco design sign.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I know the applicant is here to answer any questions. I don't have any presentation to make, or...
I have a couple extra questions.
Yeah, I have several, yeah. Go ahead, Brian.
Before the applicant comes up, I just wanted to ask a couple more questions to staff. Thank you. So, the driveway, it looks like based on your recommendation that we would remove the new driveway that they have on Central, and there would just be the one driveway that's on Avenue of Flags, is that correct?
There's two driveways on Avenue of Flags.
Are there two?
Yeah.
It's like the top and the bottom of the...
Yeah.
Just didn't know if there's enough circulation in there.
Well, but is there enough room behind the building for a car? Because you were saying that the cars would travel in one and come out the other in the back, or does it come around the front? How does, I don't see that flow. Let's see, turn around out of the pump?
No, they just go through the pumps and through.
So this would be one entrance, and the pumps are here, so this is an open area with the canopy right here, and they would come out here.
Got it. Okay.
On that, on that image you have right there, right next to where the pumps are and kind of the overhang, there's a line that's kind of an L. It's kind of, I don't know if you can see it, just a little bit lower, a little bit lower than that. There's a line right there, that line right there, and it kind of connects at the bottom right, and then it goes up. What is that?
Maybe that is something that we can ask the architect.
Yep, we'll ask the applicant. It seems like he's got answers for it.
It says "exists in building." No, it's not.
I didn't know if that had anything to do with it.
It's a drainage swell.
Drainage swell, that's okay. And then the last question I had, and you guys quickly jumped in, because it was a pre-existing gas station, and I know they had the same thing with the Santa Barbara Coy, where they had to do some contamination containment or some kind of work to make sure that the ground was appropriate, so they could build on that. And I know we have a new gas station coming in, but are there any regulations or any requirements that come into, when you have a new gas station coming in, to making sure that the environmental element of the soil is in good, proper condition?
They will be required to do soil testing at that...
Yes, there are regulations that they have to go through. I believe this site did have that, but I'm not totally sure, but that will be a requirement for any project such as this. There will be testing through the Phase One.
Okay, and would they have to, because it was previous, but it's a new one, they would have to go back through any new development coming in, regardless if it's a new gas station, would go through the same?
That is correct. They have to make sure the site is clean, just like Santa Barbara Coy. The 518 Avenue of Flags did a full cleanup from their gas station in the past, so any project, since there are quite a few gas stations along the avenue, that we're very concerned about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. Sorry, guys.
Really good. What about the parking question? In your notes, it says that the pump stall, it covers one of the parking requirements. Is that the way it works? So each one of the stops in front of a pump counts as one of the parking spots?
We gave them credit for, I believe it was five...
Six.
Parking spaces underneath the, yes, five underneath the gas canopy. And most of the time, people using the convenience store will be ones that are fueling up, and they'll run into the convenience store to buy something, so it's reasonable to allocate some of that parking, and there's...
Well, that was my question, that's customary.
Yeah, and if you look at other codes from other cities, they generally, for gas stations, give some credit to pumping, parking at the pumps, because there are people who won't park and go into the gas, to the convenience store, they're just kind of there to get gas, and then they're off.
Right.
So that's why we can give them a little credit towards that. So that's why we can give them a little credit towards, towards that.
I do not have questions for staff.
Just as a curiosity, when we put in a branded gas station like this, it's Arco, how long do they have the franchise? How long are we guaranteed to have that Arco standard here? Is it a three-year term, then it goes away, and all of a sudden we have an independent gas station that falls into disrepair? How does that, how does that work and look?
The city doesn't get involved with the franchises and who runs the gas stations, so somebody could take it over. And if somebody comes and it's in disrepair, we go through code enforcement to abate the situation.
I didn't see any solar panels in your plans. There are not going to be any solar panels?
Not, there were not any solar panels shown at this point.
That'd be a good question for the applicant.
Yeah.
And on the, for the quick-serve restaurant, is the 300, I should remember this by now, you would think, we've gone through this too many times. I know Andrea, you've walked us through this a number of times. Is the 300, or one per 300 square foot, is that consistent with what we decided?
So I believe that would be the, well, the current code would be the one per 300 for restaurants, yes. That is consistent.
And we have not processed the code amendment to change that at this point. So this is under the specific plan and zoning code, so.
Okay, okay. Thanks, guys. Any other questions for staff, guys? No? Okay. Come on up.
Good evening. Alex Cuevas, I represent the architectural engineering firm, and also my client. Any questions you might have? I have some stuff that I would like to talk about, so that way there is no more questions about the second floor, for example. We're not planning to have a second floor. We eliminated the second floor from our plan, so I think it was a little bit of confusion there, Irma. And I'm sorry if we didn't make it clear, but there is no second floor. Many reasons, the accessibility, the cost of elevator, and it just basically doesn't work. The site is not big enough to have a second floor. So that's out of the question. Your question about the, how many years the station is going to be there, at least for 20 years. Regardless if they leave, they sell it, they have a contract with Arco, it will remain an Arco station for 20 years.
Thank you. What about the Art Deco design itself? It seems that it's, and I'm not, I'm not an architect, I don't know about the design. But in doing some research about what Art Deco looks like, this building doesn't seem to be consistent with the aesthetics of a traditional Art Deco, with those repetitive geometric lines, some of the boldness of architectural features, a little bit, maybe an inclusion of some metal, like a stainless or chrome or something like that, that's incorporated in traditional Art Deco. This seemed a little bit more choppy and rudimentary, and I'm wondering if there's a way for us to incorporate some more traditional elements in that. Take a look at things like the Chrysler Building, you know, and the Empire State Building. Those are all having those geometric progressions that you come to know and love about Art Deco, and I didn't see that so much in the designs that I saw.
Art Deco is a very general architecture. And we were provided some examples from Irma on what type of, what was it the city was looking for. So there were many options. And one of the options that we found that it would fit this type of rectangular building, it was what we provided. I totally agree with the material. That material is not appropriate. But the architecture of the building, it goes together with an Art Deco. And it's such a, it's a rectangular building, you start putting too many towers, it kind of eluses the balance. That's why, I don't know if you can bring the architecture elevation. That's why we tried to balance it with those two towers. And this was more from, example, the year gave me, where there was a second floor, and it was, there were like rail on the second floor. But it is Art Deco. Maybe it doesn't look that way because of the colors that are incorporated with the design, but we're open. I mean, we're open to, you know, any other suggestions. We're not stuck with this design. I will have to go through the process again with Arco, because they've already approved it.
Sure.
And that's, that's a long process.
And we do have some, some comments from our architect regarding, and I think overall it's fine. I think it was more the materials that they were talking about with the building, so.
But again, any ideas, we can incorporate those ideas.
Take a look at his, his comments, and we can work with you on that.
Yeah, there's comments in there about the massing, to, you know, like do a step back at the top. If you have that step back and some lines, you know, even painted lines, you know, the geometrics, I feel, would be more Art Deco.
I do have a column, well, I have a lot of comments, but one of the comments about the architecture and the, and the Deco style for the canopy. That, to me, that's a personal opinion. If you're looking for someone that is coming, and I was coming from north now, and got off the freeway, and you see it. If you have a humongous canopy, they have too much on top of the canopy, you're not going to be able to see the architecture of the building. It's going to disappear. So to me, that clean canopy, it would be better than having something massive, they're going to, might as well not do anything with the building, because by the time the people passes, the only thing they're going to see is a canopy.
And, and I don't think we mean to do a massive giant canopy, but maybe some elements from the building onto the canopy to tie both of them together, but not adding a lot of, unless the condition feels other ways.
No mass to it.
Right, right. No, the canopy itself, I think, is fine, but I think that some of the details on it need to be changed. And I think that's all we're, we're looking for on that.
Okay.
And there are some examples of some very nice, modern, well, modern within the realm of the Art Deco streamlined building, gas canopies that have been done.
Definitely.
And I, just again, as staff, we do want to compliment the architect and the applicants for coming forward and getting Arco to agree to Art Deco. This was, we're very pleased to see that.
It's not easy.
No, we get it. That's why we want to publicly thank you again for.
It's not easy. It's the way or no way at all. If it was up to them, we'd have a box in there, and that's the way they want it. Trying to keep the image, like McDonald, like everybody else. There's, there's one item that is a big item, is the access on Central Avenue. We were planning, and that's the way I presented to Arco, for the delivery of the gas. The truck comes, it goes in, if you don't mind, Irma, on the side.
Is this one?
This side, this one, yes. Do we mind? Can I, can I go on there?
Sure.
Just a look at my ball spot.
You have the microphone. Grab the mic with you. There you go.
What we were planning, the delivery truck always dumped the gas on the right side. That's how, that's where the hoses are, the connection. So what we were planning to do is for the truck to come here, enter, park here, dump the gas, and get out this way. If it comes this way, there's a median there, it's going, and if it comes this way and it goes in, it's going to be very, very difficult to have what you want me to do, far as the turning radius of the truck. What we were proposing is for that driveway to be open only, only when the delivery truck comes in. We will close it, we'll have a chain or something, and when the truck comes in, when open, do the delivery.
Sorry, just talking to Public Works Director about that. I think that, I think that's a solution, to keep that closed, and then somebody would have to be there to open it for the trucks to come through.
Okay, is that good enough for you? Okay. What else?
Yeah, we can condition it that way.
Probably more like a gate thing, not a chain.
That's what I was hoping for, too.
A key card or something that.
We'll adjust our incomplete letter as well to, to address that. If that, you know, I think, I think that's a fair solution for.
It also seems safer than trying to turn a truck around in that little.
The, I'm sorry, I really apologize about the name of the street. You can tell by my accent, I'm a foreigner, so all of my guys that work in my office are foreigners, so sometimes they spell things wrong.
It's a common mistake.
I apologize for that. We'll definitely fix it. I don't like anybody spelling my name, my last name wrong, so I really apologize for that. I don't think I have any, any other comment. The second floor is gone. Whatever ideas you have for the architect, I'm going to read what the architect, the city architect is proposing, and do something with the canopy.
And can we move the trash enclosure to a less prominent location?
Definitely, definitely. We can, we can find a place for it. Drainage, you mentioned it needs to be done with the Phase Four type of thing specs. I have no, no more issues or questions. If you have any questions for me.
How practical would it be at that, at that north end where the garbage enclosure is right now, to have some sort of monument sign or monument wall put there that would say welcome to Buellton?
I think that's what, that's what you guys are looking for, and we definitely will work with you.
I just want to understand what's, what's going to be there now, and what would be different, I guess.
Yeah, that's, you know, typically, with some cities, when we're right at the gateway of the city, they take the opportunity to, you know, incorporate welcome to Buellton, welcome to, you know, unless you want us to have like, like a television type of sign that's in there with all sorts of things.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Anything else?
I asked earlier, but it was staff, or actually for you guys, there will be no solar panels?
There'll be what?
No solar panels.
Well, the new code, you have to provide, it's not mandatory now that you provide solar panels, or only the vehicles that you were talking about, far as, we will have electric chargers there on the side. It's part of the new code, you have to. But the new code, it says that you have to make accommodations for the future. And I talked to my client to see, you know, what they want to do for solar panels. But at this moment, we were not planning to have solar panels.
I just heard you mention about charging stations.
Yes.
What, is that something that you were looking at?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's more like, it's a must, I think it's part of the new building code.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Deep. Hi, guys, and I'm one of the partners. I'll go through really quick what I have. Central Avenue, we appreciate giving that access. That was the main thing, you know, because there were two existing driveways, we closed that and made it into one. And just for the truck purposes, we'll put a little lower gate, kind of a thing, you know, so, you know, only the truck guys can have an access. Trash enclosure, that was the main idea, was to put, you know, it's a dead wall if you put a trash enclosure. So that was the idea, to put something, put green or like something, City of Buellton, welcome, something like that, you know, in a metal, or, you know, however you guys feel, like, you know, that was the whole idea on that, and maybe so that when it comes here, because for us it's a dead spot, we can't make a good parking on that, and, you know, so that was the whole idea, do something, make it more nice, maybe around the trees, put some shrubs, and, you know, I don't know. So that was the whole idea. Second story, we already answered, we are not going to do with anything on the second story. Canopy, the Arco has that kind of image on the top, but definitely on the poles, we'll try to do a stainless steel or a chrome or grayish metal thing. So it kind of a little bit reflect that, but it will be hard to change the top of the canopy, you know, where the blue and Arco MPM is. But all there will be about six poles, that will be, we know, we'll put something, you know, mostly we put stone on those, but on this one, we'll put something more like a chrome or stainless steel, you know. So it gives a little bit of that effect to the, to the building. Signage, we have to show the signage on the price, it's a law. So I don't know, you know, I know 30 feet is there, but I don't know how high you will allow if we do with the, you know, with the city's welcome or something.
That's what we'll work with you on, too, because I know you have to have the prices.
Yeah, we have that pricing.
And we can try to accommodate then with the sign.
So that everybody sees. Okay. That's, and they do the math. So we just want to see how big, because we have to fit like four components into it, and then we can add on top of that, whatever, you know. Electric cars, we are talking to a charge point company, that are providers, it just depends upon, not many, only three companies does that. Charge point is one we are talking to, because it has to be instant, like a 30-minute thing. They can't be, you know, other companies are not doing that.
And charge point is in the city already. City Hall has two charge points.
Yeah, so that's the only company that have kind of, you know, held for instant, because other companies, but there's, you know, there's one on the airport, but it's called Creek something, but they don't have that instant 30-minute charge. So we have to get something that is 30 minutes charge or something. On the environmental, the site when we bought, it had no, mostly what happens is when there was an old existing gas station or something, when the tanks are moved, they got a clearance from the water quality board. So there was nothing on that when they removed the clearance, so the water quality board, you know, those are the one who kind of checks on the existing tanks and all those things. So there was nothing like that, so the site is clean. When they removed it, they gave a clearance on that, so there's no issue on that. Solar panels, solar panels, the thing is, because we need, you know, until slowly and slowly they become more efficient, the site is small, so we have to figure out where to put. But we design our canopies in a way that they can hold, but that, just the canopy, putting the solar panels on that canopy will not able to kind of accommodate the use we have. Slowly and slowly, we, you know, all over the roof on the building, and the canopy will be designed structurally according to, you know, but it all depends how many we can put. We don't want to put half, and then we're still using, you know, half of the electricity. So that's the whole idea on that. So that's pretty much, I think, that I have some comments on, but if you guys have any questions, I can answer that.
Going back to what you had mentioned about the canopy, I know you said the polling, you could possibly do something with the actual.
So can we, so pretty much, see this, this part right here?
Yep.
We can't touch that.
What about the area outside of the actual sign? Like, I know you got the Arco symbol, you've got the name, but what about?
Because this is like a trademark, you know, Chevron has that blue thing, Shell has a yellow, orange-ish, so whatever that stripe is, you know, yeah, this, this can be all kind of done.
You know, but I've seen instances where companies that used to have that.
So, see, it all depends how they change it. Now the Shell brand is all white, and they have just a Shell logo.
Yeah.
And then Chevron has put a blue light underneath that canopy, a canopy kind of a thing. You know, like a 76 has a new wave thing, but they're eliminating that, and so they keep on, you know, rebranding and all those things, so.
What I'm referring to is in Thousand Oaks, if you're driving on the 101 South or in that Thousand Oaks area, there's a corridor that's almost all masonry, like rock, and even something like an In-N-Out Burger that you would never think would ever change anything they did, looks like every, the buildings are all have a consistency to them, in the design and style, even though their symbology and their namings are all there, the colors and the materials used are very much reminiscent of the style of that city and what they're trying to go for.
See, the only thing you can do, I don't know if they allow, they don't allow anymore because it's a new thing, is, you know, we still have to have that Arco logo and, you know, whatever they have. The only thing is, I don't know, you know, Alex can talk to, you know, we can just do it why, you know, like a stainless steel, but I don't know if they will allow that. That's the only thing you can do.
Now, is it a, is it a blue?
It's like a light blue stripes kind of thing.
Maybe with the pumps, you have, you can do the pumps in the support. And if you have the blue going around, maybe the blue is tied into somewhere on the building, Art Deco.
I don't want to be red like the old Red Bull.
Throwing out some ideas.
Yeah, I'm from the valley, I don't know what you're talking about, Thousand Oaks, I grew up in the valley. It's possible, so we will do it. We will, we will incorporate the Deco on the fascia of the canopy.
And it's, and the only reason we're stressing this so much, this is the.
Yeah, exactly. What I would say, when you said, you know, the fascia, what a relief, you know, some people were, this pitched roof, and thus far as a fascia, we will incorporate it, I'll make sure the Arco approves it, and they understand. I mean, In-N-Out does it, you know, big, you know, companies like that, and we will do it.
Just another idea or thought, what about, I mean, I understand the signage, everything has to be there, and it has to be this size. Is there any way you could make the corners rounded? You know, a lot of Art Deco has the rounded corners, you know, instead of just square or straight? You know, and that could be incorporated into the top of the building or awning.
I'll look into, what I would like to do is just follow the same architecture that I have in the building, so whatever modification I'm going to follow from the recommendation of the architect, the city architect, and then I'll, so that way it kind of looks like one, one element, not just two separate things.
Is it possible we can also, next time we get a chance to meet, get some kind of elevations of kind of like maybe a.
Perspective?
Yeah, perspective views.
That'll be required at the next.
Okay, definitely.
And then we probably need to look at what your needs are for the, for the pricing signs. I mean, I know you mentioned it, but.
It's a, by the way, the one picture.
Yeah, but by law, we're, we're required to have the pricing on every street. And the way you eliminate the pricing on every street, if you're in a corner, is put it in such an angle that can be viewed from both streets. That's, you know, they have sizes, they have to be, I think it's eleven and a half inches minimum size. Because what they want to do, they want to tell the customers the pricing before they go in there. they go in there and start pumping. Because if you start pumping, there is no price, you pay $6 a gallon, and that's the reason why they have that regulation. But going back to the trash enclosure, but that was a good idea, I didn't even think of that. It would be better, because otherwise we'll have to eliminate parking stalls, if we keep the trash enclosure there and we use the back of it to use some kind of welcome, so you will not see the trash enclosure, you will see some kind of monument with some architecture feature, the guys, "Welcome to, you know, Buellton," and so on, your logo or something. And then the monument site could be, you know, something right next to it. Yeah. Okay. We're good?
Yeah, that sounds, and we'll work with you on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I just do have one additional question. If you're eliminating the second floor, how is that going to change the...
The architecture?
The architecture?
My intent, that's why I said, sorry about the confusion, my height on the building was the intention of no second floor.
Oh.
Yeah, that was, that's, I mean, at 25 feet, there's no way unless people like me only can get in.
Or me.
Or you.
Or me.
My son is 6'3", I don't even know if he's my son, so...
Okay, so the basic shell, the way you have it is...
With the modification that we're going to make, basically.
But it's not, it's not going to change because you're eliminating the second floor?
No, no, no. The architecture will change, that's all.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Just one last question. Do we have any idea what kind of quick-serve restaurant might be?
Which one you want?
Which one you want, yeah.
So what, most probably we will go with some local, local, you know, try to see. Mostly we'll lease the space or run it, because we want to always do somebody local who can come, we guys already know it, maybe they want to open another, somebody from, you know, the Santa Barbara, somebody from here, you know, somebody, we have no idea right now.
Okay, just curious, yeah, an idea.
And you do have one public comment.
We do, yes. So let's open it up for public comments. Nancy Emerson.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I think, are there three new people on the Planning Commission fairly recently?
Two.
Two. Two. Because we like to give new people our literature to read, so you know the background of what we're doing. So if you would just take one and pass it to the other people. Thank you. And I give, I have another set.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Emerson with WeWatch Save Our Stars Committee, and really appreciated Irma reaching out to me when it was clear that there were some lighting questions, so we've been in touch with each other. As you know, Save Our Stars Committee has been working since 2000 to improve the ability of all residents in the valley to see the night sky, enjoy the stars, and also to protect neighbors from unwanted light trespass. In 2011, we received information from the International Dark Sky Association about a new LED canopy that was very cost-effective and also very dark sky-friendly, and Irma remembered that she had seen this because we copied the city at the same time that we wrote to all of the service stations. I do not think that any of them did anything about that, so we still have a significant number of service stations in the valley that are way overlit and make problems for people and for the dark sky. But I am happy to report that on our eastern gateway, the Tumash Service Station is a model of good lighting, and I'd encourage you to look at the lighting there. So there is an example. It's important that the lighting be done right. One of the things that those people who are specialists in the eye tell us is that when the eye comes from dark, as many of the clients of this service station will be doing, coming off 101 into overlit service stations, when they leave, their eyes will have tried to adjust to the bright light, and then when they leave, they need to readjust to more darkness, and it's very difficult for the eye to do this, particularly as people age. So it is important, not just from a dark sky perspective, but also because it's not in the best interests in terms of highway and street safety to have people coming into overlit service stations or overlit any kind of building or parking lot. So what's being recommended with LEDs, because another problem is that it's very easy to overlight with LEDs. The energy efficiency is so great that people are tempted to use more bright lights than they should. And so I caution you as you get projects, and I also caution the current applicant to be very sure that you don't overlight. What's recommended is 40 lumens per square foot of canopy of an LED, and 40 is plenty of light for people to be able to see. It's not going to be a handicap to the service station. And we would also ask that they use warm LEDs rather than the ones that go toward the blue-white. There are a couple of reasons for that. Number one, the soft white, as it's often called, which is 3,000 Kelvin on the warmth scale for lighting or less, is easier on the eye and also protects wildlife, and the service station is not far from wildlife corridors. I hope the wildlife won't come there, but who knows? The other thing that I would caution you about is that you have residences very close to the service station, so the shielding of the lights is extremely important, and the height of the lights, because if the lights, other than the canopy lights, are too high, it's going to shine, even if it's fully shielded, it's going to shine into the apartments or condos that are on that street, and then you'll have complaints about light trespass. So those are my comments on lighting. I would like to, putting on water issues hat of the WeWatch, we have a water issues work group working, that it will be very helpful if you require drought-tolerant landscape And also will assure that when there's a drought, they have the likelihood of surviving, so they're not having to replant all the time. So thank you, and if there are no questions for me, then I'm going to leave, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great insight.
Thank you.
And we do, we do a certain level of drought tolerant, we've done most of the landscaping requirement, right, on the list of landscaping we can have?
Yeah.
So that's already covered. Perfect. Okay, great. So I think we're at a stage where, let me just go back to our... So any final comments from the commissioners, or any final questions at all?
No.
No? Okay. So to the applicant, I think we've provided quite a bit. It sounds like, for the most part, you guys are agreeable with all the staff comments, and I think the only kind of challenge was that driveway, but we've kind of come to a solution there. Sounds like the trash enclosure, there's some discussion around that, and the signage we've just got some work to do, but an architect's going to try to work with some of the comments as well on that. So I think we've got a good path forward, and I'm looking forward personally to seeing what the next round looks like. And I think that's pretty much all we need to do today, and just to wait our next turn when we get to meet again.
Yeah, we'll get the incomplete letter out to you, Irma?
Yes, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And then you'll be able to respond to it, and then once it's back in, we'll process it back to the commission.
Perfect. And I want to say thank you to the staff, I think you guys have done a tremendous job putting together, I mean, there's a lot of great commentary, and I think it keeps in the concept of the Avenue of Flags specific plan that we're really looking forward to, and also want to, you know, say thank you to the applicant for all the, your ability to be flexible and answer our questions today. I do ask, on the water quality element, I know that you'd mentioned that you guys have already kind of done that with the water board, if we could follow up on that, just to verify that the things that were stated are...
Toxic remediation items.
Yeah, exactly. That'd be great.
Yeah, they probably have the documentation that they could submit as part of their package for the cleanup of the site.
Perfect. Okay. All right, so that concludes that part. Next on our agenda is written communications. No, sir. Okay. Planning Commissioner comments.
Two of us recently attended the League of California Cities Annual Planning Commissioners' Seminar Conference in Monterey, and it was, it was really awesome. I thought, I mean, there was just a ton to learn and really a neat representation. I think we were at record with 425 attendees. I think kind of heavy on the Northern California side from where it was located, but really well put-together seminar, and they had two kind of tracks you could do. You could either go to fundamentals or more advanced, and you could mix and match and do your own thing, but it was a really nice conference. And thank you to the city for letting us go.
We appreciate both you and Commissioner Sarkei for attending, it's very important, and I know, I think, have you been to it yet?
I haven't been to it.
I know Joe has.
I really want to go, but it's always so hard to get it scheduled for a weekend.
We got a chance to meet so many other planning commissioners throughout the state, and what they're doing in their cities, and...
Thank you very much.
It's inspiring, and it's also like, wow, we're in pretty good shape compared to so many other cities that have, God, just so many problems that...
It's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah. It's hard to imagine, but yeah, all that's out there, and we're in really, really good shape.
There's benefits to being a small city.
Yeah. I can't, I think it isn't necessarily better.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, great. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, perfect. Planning Director report, Mark.
Before I turn it over to Andrea to update you on some projects, I talked to a couple commissioners before you, some others came in, but you'll notice there's smart work on the avenue now, up on, by the visitor centers, for three structures that are powder-coated steel representations of mountains, and they've been, five other locations in the county, and we've worked to get them here in the city, and they're from the Museum of Modern Art in Santa Barbara, and as part of the Arts Committee at the County of Santa Barbara, working with the city, we got them up here. In Visit San Inez Valley contributed some money for the move along with the county and the city, and the art gallery. So we have those for at least six months, and it's modern art, I've already seen people and wildlife hanging out at those, them, and it's just kind of a fun thing, some bright colors, some pinks, yellow and blue, and check it out when you get a chance, just drive up the avenue, you can't miss them.
Sounds like it.
The council's going to be further looking at the 480 Central property that the city purchased, and the council's direction, and I'm not sure I briefed the commission on this, is a parking lot. So that's what they want, so we've done some cost estimates and some designs on that, so we're going to bring that back to council to see if they're interested in budgeting for moving forward on a parking lot on that particular property. So I'll turn it over to Andrea to update you on some other things going on.
All right, so the Live Oak Lane Development Plan modification, I know we've been anticipating that coming in, and I've spoken to them today, and it sounds like they're getting very close to submitting that development plan modification formally, so that should be coming in here relatively soon to you guys, so we're excited, excited to get that back. I have been working, and staff has been working further with the Central Homes Project applicant, and we are getting closer to getting plans that would be ready to come to the commission. So at this point, we're, I've sent out additional comments related to architecture and just consistency within the plans, but if they address all of those comments, then we would likely be ready to bring the project forward to the commission, so we'll see what we get back and what timeline on that, so. And Irma might be able to speak a little bit more to the progress on the 518 Avenue of Flags mixed-use project, but from what I understand at this point, it's out for redesign with some art, just to go further with the Art Deco design, and maybe you can...
Right, this project is the one that's located on the northeast corner of Avenue of Flags and Second. Right, another prominent location, one of the corners facing our future town plaza, and after our last interchange with the applicant, and it was, they agreed at our suggestion to have the city architect give them some suggestions on design, and they came, our city architect came up with some good suggestions that they embraced, and it's our understanding that they're out for redesign at this point, and we'll be submitting something, we don't know exactly what, but that's where it stands right now.
And that's really all I have.
All right, great. Okay, and I guess that will conclude. We will adjourn.